Third, and it is approximately 10:03. And we will begin with our roll call. We'll start with ASD.
President Bellamy.
Present.
Vice President Jacobs. Mr. Donnelly.
President.
Mr. Higgins.
He will join us online at some point.
Mr. Huttelman.
Present.
Ms. Lessons.
Present, can you hear me?
Yes, and Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, and the Assembly.
Chair LaFrance.
Here.
Vice Chair Constance. Ms. Allard.
Here.
I understand Mr. Cross is en route and that Mr. Dunbar is excused.
Mr. Constance is here.
Thank you, Mr. Constance. Mr. Presvidia. Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Ms. Quinn Davidson. I understand Mr. Rivera is excused. Mr. Salt.
Here.
Ms. Zalatell.
Here.
And Assembly Youth Representative, Ms. Price.
And this is Cameron Presvidia, I am present.
Thank you, Mr. Presvidia.
Thank you. I'm just checking the online to make sure we didn't miss anyone. And Assembly Member Quinn Davidson is also online, on telephone. Thank you. Okay, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of America. And one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Member Jacobs, would you do the land acknowledgement, please?
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denian people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, and work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and resilience of its indigenous peoples. Shana.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Item B on the agenda, which is the approval of our March 4th minutes. Those were sent out earlier, so you would have had an opportunity to look at them. Yes.
Move to approve the minutes of the March 4, 2022 joint meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Moved to approve the March, it's been moved in second to approve the March 2nd meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Member Donnelly.
So I guess it's the traditional way they've been prepared for the joint meetings, but when it comes to the part where it says one of the members spoke, it doesn't indicate anything about what that member spoke about. And I think for a public record, it would be useful if there was some, you know, when we prepare our school board minutes, there's usually a short little thing that says what the subject of that discussion was. And I think that would be useful to the public, you know, to be able to go to the minutes and see, oh, well, you know, member so-and-so spoke on this subject.
And that's, you mean, so that doesn't impact the minutes that are already here?
No, no, but I'm just saying that in the future, I would really like to see that.
Okay, and I don't know that we want to discuss it today, but you are absolutely correct. We do our minutes a little different, but we were moving to a, even the district was actually planning to move to a, I don't know what, what do we call it, Katie? I can't remember.
They're true action minutes, with the recorded video being the, kind of the detail of the report that's posted, or of the meeting that's posted.
But your point is well taken, Member Donnelly, and we can't, for the joint meetings, we can absolutely take that into consideration for future minutes. Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve the March 4th minutes. Seeing no more discussion, any opposition? Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, that brings us to Item C. I do want to recognize our student member who has joined us. This is our first meeting?
Yes, it is.
At first with the joint group.
Yes, and unfortunately my last.
Oh, my goodness. So anyway, Sarah, welcome.
Yes.
And I know you want to add something to the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to make an amendment to the agenda to add Item G6, which would be student mental health.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved in second to add Item G6 on student mental health to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Any opposition? That item is added, seeing no opposition. And I would like to add recognition as Item 6, well, actually, my amendment is a little time-specific, because the person that we will be honoring is on a very tight schedule. He won't be here till 11:00, so I would like the flexibility to add that recognition when he gets here. And we'll, and it will be, we'll make it Item G7, but with flexibility with the timing. So that's my, that's the item I'd like to, that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second to add recognition as Item G7 to the agenda. Any discussion? Any opposition? Seeing none, Item G7 is added as recognition. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to, oh, now we need to actually, we've amended the agenda, now we need to accept the agenda as amended.
Madam President, I move to adopt the amended agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Moved in second by, second, moved by Member Jacobs, second by Assemblyman Salty, is it Salty? Salt, thank you, to approve, to adopt the agenda as amended. Any opposition? Seeing none, the agenda is approved as amended. So Item D is financial planning, we have no items. Item D is capital improvement needs, we have no items. F is our comprehensive plan, we have no items. So that brings us to items of mutual concern. And at this time, I would like to introduce our new superintendent, our incoming superintendent, Dr. Jarrett Bryant. He has been on duty since, I think, the 16th of May, so he's in his third week of transitioning, meeting employees, he got to attend a few end-of-year activities, so I'd like to give him a moment to address the joint assembly meeting.
Good morning, good morning, Board, good morning, Assembly. My name is Jarrett Bryant, and I am both humbled and eager to serve as the Anchorage School District Superintendent beginning next month. You know, it really is hard to believe that I just moved to Anchorage two weeks and six days ago, and I'm already honored to call the great city of Anchorage my new home. And with that said, when I start a superintendent next month, I'll do my part to ensure that our students in Anchorage have access to a world-class education, because I truly believe that when students succeed in Anchorage, the city of Anchorage succeeds, and that's not going to be easy work. In fact, that's going to be work where I'm going to lean on the supports of the municipality, and that's why I'm very excited to keep that partnership going. It's very important to our students and really the future of Anchorage. So I look forward to meeting and learning from each of you over the coming weeks, months, and years. Thank you very much, the sky's the limit, Anchorage.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Dr. Bryant, again. Alrighty, Item 2, G2, the ASD Strategic Plan, Board Goals and Guardrails. You have a handout in front of you. We wanted to just bring you up to speed on where we are with our strategic plan. As you know, the Board adopted Strategy 2026, probably 18 months ago? About 18 months ago, and we have been focused and driven by these goals, not only in our work and planning, but our legislative advocacy. We have been really focused on our goals and our guardrails and monitoring them. And I know we have shared a couple of our monitoring reports with you, and these are the reports we will have every single month, and we want to let you know where they are, how we put them together, so that you can track right along with us and help us monitor ourselves. We have three goals. We have reading proficiency, math proficiency, college, career, and life ready. And really, if you look across all advocacy organizations, education advocacy organizations, those are the three highlights of what we need kids to know and be able to do. And in addition, we have our guardrails, and our guardrails are the values that came out of our strategic planning community meetings. Those are the things that are important to our community, things like mental health, things like a diverse workforce, things like making sure that all of our kids have access to the multiple programs that we have. And so we wanted to take a minute to bring you up on a lot of things, but we're going to start with, because as you can see from that first, we had, we've had our graduations, we had a wonderful end of school, into our school year. Families really enjoyed the graduations, to be in person all together again inside a building that was absolutely beautiful and well organized. So we're going to start with our strategic plan, and with our goals and our guardrails, and then we will entertain your questions. So that's the vision.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm just going to share a little bit more in detail of these, so that we have a mind's eye of from whence we've come. If you remember Destination 2020, that, those were the goals that the Board had set, and we were coming up to 2020, and it's infamous year that everyone will know, but in 2019 is when this work began, with over 100 community meetings in schools, community-wide, online, they continued through 2020 to come up with these goals. So this was very inclusive of the community, as well as very inclusive of students themselves. And I'd just like to share that the college, career, and life readiness, a lot of those things that we're asking for competencies when kids graduate now, actually came from kids. So two of the highlights that came from students themselves was a requirement for financial literacy, and basically, the kids just said, well, we need to know adulting, is how they said it, we just need to know how to be adults, we need to know the real stuff. And when we dug deep with our kids, they told us it was about money and how to use money. So there is a requirement for financial literacy for all kids by 2026, and then moving on. And then they also told us, when we asked about that adulting, they said relationships, conflict resolutions, all those social, emotional skills that support our behavioral health and mental health. And so we call them the we skills and the me skills, the personal asset building, as well as how to work with others. And so I always like to share that, because from the mouths of babes, we can get smarter, that they really can tell us what they need and what they want, understanding what their future holds for them. So to get there, though, we know that all kids need basic competencies, and many, we have kept our eye on quite some time, the differences in kids who take our AP courses or are engaged in more CTE courses. We are keeping an eye on who are the kids that are attracted to these, and why aren't all kids and all socioeconomic status, you know, kids of poverty, kids of wealth, coming from their homes, different, you know, nationalities, different races? There's some discrepancies and disparities, so we're wondering, why aren't, what programs do kids want, and why aren't they seeking them? And what we found out is that a lot of our kids have those opportunities taken away, although we say they're open to everyone, they're taken away because they haven't reached the basic competencies that are needed to enter into these electives, to enter into these. And so they're redoing things that they should have learned way early. And so therein lies the focus for the reading proficiency and math proficiency, that we build those competencies early. And the science of reading, the preschool study, everything is in line. This is, there is, the planets are aligned in all of the research and other empirical evidence about how do we support kids so that everybody has this high-quality education? So with that, we want to share that you can find these online, the goals and the guardrails, and the goals are what we want students to know and be able to do, that's the vision, the values are the guardrails, so that we, in order to do those things and reach the goals, the values are what the community said, what they value, that we need to keep our values in place as we reach the goals. But these are not just a poster on the wall, they're actually hundreds of people from the classroom level through schools, a through line all the way to this district office to ensure that the work is getting done, and we're doing it together. We're building competencies together for the future. So we have strategic plan monitoring, and this is the way that the Board gets their checkups about, hey, what's happening in schools, right? So they set the vision and the values, the people that they hire, from the teachers to the aides, to the principals, to our bus drivers, anyone involved in getting our education program together, from leaders to where we say the Gimba, where the value is added, which is in the classrooms. We then report up through this strategic plan monitoring how it's going. You can take a look at any of the monitoring, any of the goals of the guardrails, prior data reports, all on the Board's site. So this is our website, and if you see under School Board, there's so many things there, the monitoring, goals and guardrails is there, the actual information about it. We even have all the data that our community gave us in building the goals and guardrails, so the evidence behind why the Board chose these is still there. We've archived it all, so that anyone can go back and look at it. So we are on what we call a monitoring calendar that really shares how we are going to give the Board an update, how are we doing? And then we spend that time reviewing student learning and other student assets and actions, if you will, with the guardrails, what we're doing. The goals are about what students can do, and the guardrails are about the systems, how are the systems supporting what we say are important, which are our students? And so we report these on a monthly calendar, and they're very detailed data report, but also, the Board spends approximately an hour digging deep, asking questions. It's an exciting time for me, but it's also a pressure cooker for me, because the superintendent's expected to be able to speak to the work of the organization. And it's always a delight to do so, but there's always questions that I don't have answers to, and that really none of us do, that seek the next question about, well, then, why is this this way? So we worked toward it. But the outcome mon, oh, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to let everybody know you have a copy of the calendar, the monitoring calendar.
Oh, thank you, and that is for next year, so this is what's coming up?
Cycle two.
Cycle one is all archived on that website. Thank you, I forgot that we had that in there. All right, so then, on Strategy 2026, lots of different pieces are there, very, very transparent. There are no secrets in understanding where students are in their learning, because you have to know it to grow it. And we don't share information to make anyone feel poorly. Data are data, they're just numbers, and our job is then to do something about it, because every single one of our indicators has a child behind it, whether it's an attendance one, being in school, any of our, whether they're graduation rates, some of our guardrails about our hiring practices, what students are learning, all of those things that we say are important to a high-functioning organization are measured, because you treasure what you measure, and so we want to be sure to communicate that. Some folks have said, well, we haven't, you know, the numbers need to move, or all we want to do is move numbers. I'm here to share that children and our employees are behind what we care about. And so how do we look at it? We share information about it using data, behind those data are human beings, okay? So we should be caring about it. So just want to share, Goal 1 is the most loftiest goal out there, because it's one of the most important, literacy. And this is really the mother of all access to everything else. We use reading to do everything else in our lives, to excel. And what we found out, and we continue to find out, is that kids are getting through our system not necessarily as non-readers, but they're leveling out at the fourth through sixth grade. If you have a kid who's behind early on, generally, as they matriculate through an education system, whether it's here in Anchorage or anywhere else, they're not getting the skills to break down the language, the decoding of the language after third grade. It, that's not in your curriculum, because you learn to read, and then you read to learn, so the content just builds and builds and builds. And so the parable we use a lot about, the babies, you know, floating down the river, and the community gets together to take the babies out of the river, and they're all working together to take the babies out of the river. I'm telling you, we are all working together to help kids, help kids take them out of the river, but until we did go back to find out why the babies are being put in the river in the first place, we don't have enough capacity in schools to, say, at a seventh-grade level, to bring a child back to who doesn't know the sounds of a language. And this isn't about whole language, or this language, or that, this is any language. If you know a foreign language, if you know English, whatever the language is, you need to know the sounds and how to put them together, as well as build your vocabulary. And if you don't have that, you're not going to be proficient later on. And so we want to build that capacity, honor the superpowers of multiple languages, but certainly, our kids have to know and be able to read English higher than the sixth-grade level. So here we are in our trajectory, you will find that these data have a superintendent outlook, like what's the evaluation? We are far behind, we need to ensure and do some better work around this. We have been in and out of a pandemic, in and out of schools, and I want to recognize our best advocate for getting us back in school, Sarah here. I have admired her tenacity over the last two years, and I do honor you. Thank you for everything you've done to get our students back. But we are working on that, and the HB 114 did have the reading bill in there, as well as mental health supports, as well as teacher certification support, so it has a lot of educational funding. One of the best things in there is that pre-K can be funded at .5 a child now. So Anchorage generally competes well for the state dollars for pre-K. We generally get over half of them in the state, when we have about a third of the kids of the state. And now we can, outside of those grants, we can't double-count a child, but we can continue to open up new pre-Ks. Over the last six years, we have opened up 26 additional pre-Ks in Anchorage, using a multitude of different funding sources. Now we have a constant one that we don't have to compete for, because it's built into the base student allocation, and so that's a very positive thing. Now, these will demonstrate not only the grade levels where kids are, and there's a color-coded at the bottom, the color legend will share. This one is the interim goal for 1.1. The reading goal is 80% proficiency, but we use curriculum-based measures to get that, because little kids, they don't take state tests, okay? They don't take the, it's called AK* now, they, we don't. Prior to third grade, the reliability and validity of state tests on kids, they're not valid. So what do we use? We use interim assessments, and these are assessments that a teacher sitting right next to a child to give. So this demonstrates that we have a lot of work to do, but all the pieces are here, the planets are aligned, we have support from the state level, we have support from the Board level, we have support at the classroom level. It is a monumental task for our teachers to gain that competency, to be able to teach all kids at, to a certain level, and our supports are built around teacher efficacy in their classrooms. If we are doing, we're doing the right thing if we support what's happening at the Gimba, or where the value is added, which is our classrooms. And I saw a question, do you want to just wait to the end?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Oh, okay. Yes, go on.
All right, thank you, I'm really excited about the pre-K. I do have a question, though, do, does the ASD pre-K programs, do those come with transportation into those programs, busing and lunch?
Sure, so right now, some of our programs that we have do and some don't, we haven't had access to this new, through the BSA allocation, because when this comes into play, you'll also get funding for transportation. But right now, we have some programs that are neighborhood schools, so the kids walk, there is no transportation, and we have strategically placed them in places where it's mostly a walking school, and we have a lot of those on the east side of town. We have utilized special education funding, as well as title funding, district-wide title funding, to provide both transportation and food, it just depends on the length of the day and the multiple programs. Like I said, right now, the programs that we have span probably four or five different grants, and so they have to first meet that grant and then add on. What we're looking to do is to align them better and have them all, we would like to do transportation, and we do want to do food services as well. And so utilizing the BSA state funds, we'll be able to move into that, because they will include transportation funding.
Okay, it'd be really great to kind of get the data or the information about the baseline and where you're headed, so we have that trajectory. I think that's really important, especially as you talked about equity and access, especially for these early skills and how that moves through the system, so that we can see where we started and the progress we're making.
That's great. And on that topic, what we should say is that ASD actually has targeted our pre-K at the students who do not have access. So our present 26 additional pre-Ks were targeted for students who do not have access. And generally, just so you know who they are, the highest of wealth have access to pre-K. The students who come from the, really, our poorest family, that have other supports such as Head Start and other funding, they are served. The working parents, who are working paycheck to paycheck, are the ones that primarily are underserved, and so we work with United Way and our other partners to identify them, so they come, and the students who have academic skills that are behind, developing delayed students, so we work together with our community to do child find, and the students with the biggest need go in first, the next need go in second, and those are paid for. The next need is really our targeted audience of our really lower socioeconomic students, but that don't have a severe developmental delay, or do not qualify for Head Start.
Did you have a follow-up?
I guess I just have a comment, which I think all of that just stresses the importance of transportation. You can offer a service to working parents who work out, you know, in those hours where, you know, they would otherwise need to be transporting their children to the program. So I think that's been an ongoing cause of disparity within the school district. I mean, we see it in the charter schools, we see it in specialized programs, so I think as we're, as you all are building this out, I guess I can't stress enough the importance of the transportation piece. I know you know that, but it just seems worth saying out loud.
Yeah, so we say it out loud all the time. All of our targets, as you see, are to students who are not having that access. So absolutely, and again, just to stress, those 26 came from competitive grants that we went after to serve kids better.
Member Donnelly.
On transportation, it's important to note that that's one of the exceptions to the limitations on local support for school districts. We on local support for school districts. We can receive additional funds from our city that won't, and we won't be penalized for it if the funds are for transportation. You know, most things, we're up against the limit. Anchorage wonderfully, thank you very much, Assembly and all the taxpayers, we're at our cap right now. But an exception to that is transportation.
Thank you, Member Donnelly.
Thank you. That's a good note to have. So what we do is we don't only look at the 30,000-foot view, learning and learning data. We want to know, and this is just for a mind's eye, of what's happening in classrooms, how school teams break down the information. And so I'm just going to share with you some data on winter to spring, and this is kindergarten. And this is how detailed we are. So we're all familiar with the ABCs. We come with knowing our ABCs. Generally, kids know it because it's a sing-song, A, B, C, D, E, F, G. What they don't know and what they struggle with sometimes, especially if they don't hear it at home, are the letter sounds. Sounds are the building block of language. When you talk about dyslexia, dyslexia isn't a cognitive disability. It's actually in, it's what students hear. It's actually auditory. They hear things differently. So it literally is different parts of the brain, frontal lobe, all the different lobes. It's three different lobes that go into, believe it or not, the frontal cortex, the back, and then the right and left side all have to get together for a kid to read. So we want to know letter sounds. And I'm just going to come up here to share. So at the beginning of this year, we had 1,026 kids at low risk, this many at some risk and high risk. High risk means like rut row, we really need extra work to catch kids up. It is easier to implement reteaching K through 2 than it is later on. Because remember, K through 2 aren't really learning content. Content comes third grade on. So these are building blocks. What we found is that in the spring, we took these, where did these thousand kids end? 755 stayed in low risk, some went to some risk, but then 16 went to high risk. So we want to decrease the red, increase this, because we don't know in the yellow whether they move down or up. You guys, this is the end of kindergarten. We have this many kids who don't know the sounds of the letters yet. They're going to get the first grade. And what's going to happen? But word segmenting is basically a simple thing. Like if you heard the word cat, can they go cat? That's what word segmenting is. So we break this down to know where are kids in the simple, basic forms of building language. If they struggle here, they might start to word call, which is why we do nonsense words. But any child, if they're not decoding, when they get to eighth grade, they're going to be like, and they get to a multi-syllabic word, same biology, it's going, they're going to struggle if they can't decode. So this is just to share how big it is that we want, now this summer school, we have a lot of these kids in there because we want to move them over here. There's fewer and fewer opportunities as kids get older to learn basic sounds. That doesn't happen in third grade classrooms. It doesn't happen in fourth grade classrooms. If we get these kids in sixth grade, think about sixth grade, they're not really going to feel very confident in learning their sounds when they're 12 years old, right? So we want to ensure it happens. But I can help you read this. This just shares how many we're starting and then where did they land at the end of the year. We keep an eye on this because we start with these kids in the summer school as well as next year. Because if you can teach them the sounds of the language, then they're going to move right along. So I'm just sharing this because of the monumental issue, which is the next one, third grade.
We have a couple of questions. Member Zalatell?
Thank you. So how does, this great information, how does this inform referrals for special education? Because you're obviously identifying a significant deficit. And you mentioned something like dyslexia, and so that's going to be a different learning style and may need specialized instruction. I think you were going to get to that third grade. That high risk is still there. And so obviously, early identification of those who would need specialized instruction beyond just summer school would be key.
Well, that's great because our system has built in every day what's called the multi-system, multi-tiered system of supports, which when children are identified here, there could be two things. It could be a disability or it could be the child never learned it. The child was never instructed and never had an opportunity to practice it. So our multi-tiered system of supports uses these data to provide about 45 minutes to 50 minutes a day of specialized instruction to see, is it, I was never taught this, or is it a disability? And so it's, and our special education is part of our multi-tiered system of support. As you know, we start in the classroom level with teaching everyone. And then as kids aren't learning or if they struggle, we move to, is it specialized? Do we just, you know, did they not pick it up? Is it the dyslexia that they didn't hear it? Many of our students who have dyslexia don't have an IEP because they are learning in their classroom. So multi-tiered system of support includes our special education as a process.
Yes. And the district has an obligation to inform parents if they suspect that a child, you know, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't want something like a response intervention or a multi-tiered system of learning to supplant identification of kids who should go through that full evaluation process and make sure parents have that option. Not every kid will qualify, of course. However, what you're finding is a consistent issue over and over. And so I.
What consistent issue?
I mean, you're finding that you have a consistent set of deficits in these things. I mean, you highlighted these high-risk kids. So simply to say, oh, well, we're going to offer you summer school, but not using one of the tools that's somewhat mandated by federal law, which is the special education evaluation, once you have found children who might be in need, is troublesome to me or worrisome to me, that you need to kind of probably pursue both pathways.
Actually, we should share our summer school data with you because in many of our summer schools, it really was a lack of access of high-quality instruction. And we have our kids in some of our schools improve by 80%. And so they truly weren't given that. But I want to assure you that our special education and our processes are tied into MTSS and that we, you know, we're following IDEA and we're very strong in that area. And we continue this summer to even have more training. So I appreciate your comments.
Okay. And I guess the final comment I have is, it seems like the kids aren't getting access to this kind of instruction, yet the response is to give them summer school. So additional instruction is great. However, they're still young kids and they're being asked to do more. We're putting it back on the kids. So they're being asked to go to summer school. While there are peers who've had this access in some way, aren't going to summer school. So I think it's something we need to think about.
That's a great thing too, because part of the reading bill is to make sure that all of our educators can teach and know high-quality instruction. And so not having access to high-quality instruction is something that we're looking at because it is such an important role. And to let you know that summer school is actually, one of the comments from one of the kids was, I didn't know summer school was like this. This is fun because we make it like a camp, but also want to build vocabulary in language learning. So totally agree. We want more of it. I would say that the reading bill, to your point of notification, offers three times a year that you have to notify parents and the parents actually sign. And then you have a plan of what you're going to do. So it's totally built in. I hope Senator Begich was a huge proponent of that. And it's all there, those things you mentioned.
We have two more questions and then we'll move on. Yes.
Suzanne.
Thank you, President Bellamy. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, for this information. And I wasn't sure where my comment question fit. It was pertaining to dyslexia. And my question is, as far as evaluation or screening and potential intervention, what's available for older kids? And I ask this because I've come to have a broader understanding of dyslexia and that it's possible for a student to excel in elementary school and then be challenged in middle school as content becomes more abstract. And they may actually have had an established pattern of doing well on tests and then not qualify for an IEP, but also struggle unless there's a significant intervention, which.
That is great. Yeah. So some of the interventions are Lynda Mood Bell, and there's some other ones that we actually have specialists for. But you are absolutely, that's why decoding, why you want them to know if they can decode, because what you're saying, they become word callers. They memorize. And when we use the context of the book, you see pictures. Things are more abstract when you get older. So Dr. Knutson, the assessment for middle and high school in regard to dyslexia and the supports, do you have that? Yeah, come on up and you can share. But that is exactly why we're trying to find out young, because kids are, especially our precocious learners that have lots of vocabulary, they're good at guessing things. That's why you use nonsense words to see if it is just guessing, because nonsense words are like the word vit, V-I-T, to see if they can break it down, even though they've never heard the word before. That is actually a one-minute screener where it brings up, oops, let me check this. So we, the general screener zone and everybody. And then as we catch students, we do provide those additional assessments, as Member Zalatell said, to say, oh, this is a higher level. This is a higher level. So.
Yeah. And just to add to that, we have really focused on middle school this year and we've taken the opportunity, we use measures of academic progress and growth, which is what we do three times a year with our middle and high school, early high school kids. And that gives us an indicator of whether there's a problem. It just can say, take a closer look at this kiddo. So what we've done is we've gone into the schools and we have had an ELA team, English Language Arts team, who's gone into the schools. And then we follow up with curriculum-based measures that Dr. Bishop talked about. So we can dig deeper and really listen to the reading and see what errors they're making. From that, then we can really see, is it an auditory problem that they're having? They're not hearing the sounds of words? Are they having the decoding problem? As Dr. Bishop said, a lot of kids have strong vocabulary, so they can get through quite far before we actually see a problem. So we are starting to work with middle schools and how we do this more systematically. And what we call it is more diagnostic assessment. So once we do those screenings, then we can identify kids who need more deeper assessment. So we use curriculum-based measurements. There's also very specific assessments that assess for phonological awareness deficits that we can do with kids. And that's a real key one that we do with older kids because that's usually where the problem is and we miss it with older kids unless we go down to that layer.
Thank you, Dr. Knutson. Follow-up quick?
Just a quick comment, and thank you for that information. I guess I'll say that as I've learned more about dyslexia, it's a lot more widespread, I think, than many people think. And oftentimes, it's categorized as presenting in a certain way, and it's a lot more broader than that. And I would also say that there are some barriers for families because I know if you get a private screening, it can be, or evaluation, it can be like $400. And the Lynda Mood Bell, I think, is.
Well, we're working with, that's a great, we're working with Posey Boggs is one of our partners in creating our plan. And so the Dyslexia Foundation, the Alaska Reads Foundation, I want to rest assured, this person right here is a science of reading kind of person. So it is getting done. Yep. When we go from here, though.
I have one more question. Assemblyman Salt?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bishop. Great information. Just a quick question. Are we, if you look at this as a point in time count, it looks like, if you look at this over, let's say, a three to five-year period, are we gaining on this problem or is this problem getting worse? And I imagine it might be a leading question, as you might have more slides on this. Thank you.
No, no. Thank you, Member Salt. Actually, starting from 2016, we did see an improvement in our reading ELA. Since the pandemic 2020, having children out, we have, in our youngest kids, we have seen a decline. And a lot of that is the access to other adults who are speaking, other children who are speaking, good, you know, role models, learning online, and then of course, just being in class and attending to this. So as of late, are, we do not, over the last two years, we're struggling. But again, we put in the right mechanisms to move forward. Initially, from 2016 to 19, we had improvement with the work that we were doing. And the board in 2017 adopted a new reading program that everyone used that supported phonemic awareness. That's a great question.
Right. Thank you. You may continue.
Sure. So thank you, Madam President. So we also go into other things when we ask ourselves, what data generally do is say, why? Like, what's happening here with these kids or this school or classroom? Or is it a child? Is it our system? And then we sometimes think about attendance. And that comes up because, wait a minute, this year, you know, we've had, we've struggled to keep the schools open. And just so you know, I subbed into school for seven weeks every Friday because we wanted to keep them open. We were not going to shut our doors. And so I kind of know reading, but I'm a math teacher. And for me to go in the classroom, I could do what I could. But the true experts are our teachers that teach us every day. But if you look at our achievement for just second grade, fast bridge with this, a curriculum-based measure just means you use the curriculum to measurement, which means you're using words and sounds, not something abstract. The attendance rates and the achievement is all over the place. There isn't saying, oh, if you attended all the time, you're better. So this leads us to believe that this is more of a systems approach that we need to address. I want to share with you this website called Edunomics, which is a national study, I think it's Cambridge, is it Cambridge? Georgetown, that is taking all states, and you can drill down to Alaska, and paying attention to how much money are we spending per pupil and what are the outcomes? Now, this is national and it came across because of the funds over the last couple of years that have been put into everything, education through, over COVID. So Edunomics is very powerful. It will demonstrate to you, are we getting the return on our investment? ROI is hard for educational people or nonprofits. We want to say, what is the value of our investment? It should be high-value learning for children.
I see Member Constant has his hand up.
Yeah. Superintendent Bishop, I just wanted to say thank you. Actually, I just heard you say something that I find to be great credit to you, and that is that you spend time teaching in a classroom. I know that's a little distraction from this topic, but when I was in high school, the, there was a strike among the teachers. And one of the demands was that the superintendent spend one day a year in the classroom teaching. And the superintendent actually said, doctors don't change bedpans. And so I have, it's a great credit that you've done that. And to Mr. Bryant, I hope you take heed on that.
Well, thank you for that. It was actually enjoyable. In one school I went to, they decided to switch the schedule all the way around and had me do PE outside. And I, and the comments from the staff was, she really stayed outside for four hours. So I was like, yes, I brought my snow boots and everything. So, but thank you for that. It was a delight to get to know our teachers more and what's happening in our classrooms. So I just want to share with you what ASD, our data are on this national site. And the circles demonstrate, and Members Zalatell brought up some of this, that there's just some headwinds and some tailwinds behind different kids, families and communities. And the size of the circle is the size of the school. The color of the circle is their socioeconomic. So we have green circles, red circles, yellow is in the middle. But you could hover on any one of them. And so we do have an outlier, and we just want to hover and say, okay, so this is literally how much money per student goes into that school. All by reported funding codes to the state. They take state data and create this. And we have it for graduation rates. You, I mean, literally, you can do this research on your own. This is public information. Now, this is just a status report of where kids are at a certain time with a summative assessment. But we've taken and looked at, what about our own assessments in growth? Because we really want to see growth happening. And so for us, we're doing the same thing. We built our own code to look at the same types of information because we want to learn. Fairview Elementary, they're above the mean. They're having great growth. What's happening at Fairview that a similar school with similar kids and demographics and even money isn't creating any change? And so when you talk about the value of the investment, our value is in our people. It's people doing this work. And we want to be sure that people are getting rewarded for their work and that we can replicate that work, replicate good teaching. And so this is going to be on the ASD site that you could look at at any time to look at your district schools. You can have just elementary, high school, everybody, whatever you wanted. And I just think the power of information, when you know it, you grow it. So, Madam President, that is the end of this little monitoring thing. So, Madam President, that is the end of this little monitoring thing.
So we have, Member Lessons, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, first of all, Dr. Bishop and team, thank you for including this information, especially the focus on growth in relation to our per pupil expenditures. I think that's really valuable, maybe in a way more so than outcomes, but that's my personal perspective. I wanted to really, and this is not directly, this is indirectly related to this discussion. I wanted to make sure the Assembly is aware, and other board members are aware, of a program that the Anchorage Public Library has offered that may be on its last legs. And it's called the Lena Start Program. And it's a talk pedometer, 10-week program. So think of it as like your step counter. Well, this is what children and families can use to make sure that their babies, up to about three years of age, have access to, to make sure that they're getting ample exposure to that sort of call-and-response, back-and-forth conversation between parents and child. If there's not enough dialogue going on in the house, the technology will alert the families. And it's my understanding that the last Lena Start Program is going to be offered this summer, and that it may need additional grant funding. So that's just a flag that I became aware of at the recent reading conference. So it's really more of a comment and information than a question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Lessons. Okay, so we're gonna, let's see, is Sergeant Reynolds here? Reynolds? Not yet? Okay, so let's go, continue.
Oh, he is here.
Welcome. So this is, this is the item G7. And you were, you gave me the flexibility to do this part before, out of sequence, actually. So welcome.
Thank you. Our special guest is Rain Reynolds. And we wanted the, both the Assembly and the Board, our Board President and I, wanted him not to leave us, and nor the, I know the Assembly worked quite a bit on keeping SROs as well as the School Board. But Rain was our leader, and he was our sergeant here. And he is valued member of the ASD community. And our students and staff have enjoyed his support for keeping our school students open and safe. And this morning, we want to say thank you, as well as good luck on your new ventures, because I do believe you're moving over to homicide and leading that department. So Sergeant Reynolds has stood up every day for our students, and he's been a mentor to them. He's gotten to know them. And certainly, we know that his impact is going to last. One of the things that during, when our schools were closed, I continued to work out of this building, and it was like a ghost town, except for Sergeant Reynolds was here as well. He kept his office. And I would, I asked him, what are you doing every day? Like, if kids aren't in school? And he goes, oh, my gosh, we're busier. He said, because of the needs, the behavioral health and the mental health, we're actually busier. So any call that went, came in that was apparent about a child, our SROs responded to. And so what the beauty of it was, is then they, in whichever area, school area they were in, they already had a relationship with the teachers that worked with the students and things. So he even said he was busier during that time, because it was highly stressful. So I just want to thank you that even during the toughest times, we've really been able to do things together. The earthquake as well, we've just had a strong connection with ASD and APD, and we thank you.
So on behalf of the School Board, as well as all the students in the Anchorage, students and staff in the Anchorage School District, we are going to miss you. I don't know that my heart can take much more of these changes. We got lots of changes. But I do know in my heart that change is good. So we do wish you well. But I would like to just highlight, you know, the team that you have led for us, the love that you have given to our students. You are working way beyond the workday in making sure that whenever there is a call for kid, that involves one of our kids, no matter what school they're at, you're on it. That is appreciated. You have kept our students safe. You have trained a team that absolutely understands child development and the things that, you know, how to engage with the growing mind, the growing brain. We really do appreciate all that you have done. And we appreciate your commitments to our students. And we wish you the very best in your new venture. So now you have to send a clone back here to take over where you're leaving off.
Yes. And Sergeant Reynolds, I don't know if we can clone this. I don't know if folks know, he's a farmer, actually, and he raises pigs. And he's brought his pigs to school. And he even writes children's books about pigs and shares that as well with curly-haired pigs, which I didn't know existed until he showed me. So he's really gone above and beyond. And so the Anchorage School Board and Administration is grateful for your service to the Anchorage School District. The Resource, School Resource Officer Program, with your leadership and guidance, has had a positive effect on our community and impact. Thank you for the service you have done, and we wish you well on your new ventures. And the Board President has a certificate for you.
Why we have your expertise here with us today? I had a question. One of our biggest challenges with school security is with our middle schools and senior high schools, are the challenge with controlling points of access in those larger schools? If you had any thoughts from your years of experience about how we might do a better job with that? Because that is one of the challenges that we've discussed previously as a School Board.
Yeah, absolutely. It's probably not a favorable idea. But definitely, if we just lock our schools and we have a single point of access, we have somebody that greets them at the door, and we know who's coming in, going in the school. It's not easy, but it's necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So we are now going on to graduation, and I'm checking our time. We have an hour left. So that, let's kind of meter ourselves.
I'll zoom through this. And the picture here is of graduations. And we just wanted to share that we did complete face-to-face, as our President has shared, at the Alaska Airlines Center. And the graduations went well. Hopefully, you were able to make one or two of them, if you have a connection in the community, quite celebratory. The graduation rates in ASD have improved over time. And again, the graduation rate is just a small piece of that college-career-life readiness. It is the floor, not the ceiling, because kids have to have assets. We don't want to just graduate them without being able to do things. And so our highest year was right prior to the pandemic. It was 84% of all students. And even though we had the pandemic, the last two years have been the second-to-highest. And so we've really put a focus on that with even higher graduation rate rigor. And that's what's built in the college-career-life readiness. And I do want to note, this next picture, one of the schools that were built over the last few years is the Middle College. And that is a school for juniors and seniors who can earn dual credit in the space of college. They literally go over to UAA. And we utilize the base student allocation to assist in funding. And recently shared, just because it was a number, I didn't realize this, the principal shared that 4,267 credits were earned by the graduates this year, a little over 200 of them. And which is a savings to their family of $1.1 million. It isn't free, nothing's free. But what we've done is take the base student allocation and utilized it for students who want to do this. Those students that move on to other colleges, all the credit has been transferable for them. So we're just proud of that. And this year, eight students qualified for an associate's degree. So some of the kids really got after it and got it done. Over half of the students are first-generation college students. So their parents had never been to college. And this is an opportunity to have college paid for. It's been open five years now, and over 20,000 credits have been earned by the kids. So we just wanted to share. It is located inside of King Tech, adjacent to university. So the kids have our support, and then they walk over or take the UAA bus.
Do we have the money saved to families based on the credit? The kids were able to pay?
Over a million dollars this year. There's over a million dollars this year. In the five years, it's been almost 10 million. Yes, and there's a question over there.
Oh, yes, go on, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about the graduation rate kind of goals, that the target goal of by 2026, having a 90% graduation rate. So just looking at it, over the last six years, it's increased 2%, given the pandemic, and there was a lot of struggles. But right now, I don't see any efforts in the schools to remedy the younger students, to help them actually strive for graduation. In fact, over the years, I've seen a lot of students value their education less. You know, they're taking on jobs, they're taking on trade schools instead of focusing on high school graduation. So I was just curious how you guys got that goal and how you're supporting high school students currently? Because, you know, I have sophomores and juniors who they missed out, freshmen missed out on almost all of their middle school. They don't know how to do high school right now. A lot of them are struggling. So I'm just curious on, if you changed this goal, how you got that goal, and how you're going to support those students? Thank you.
That's a great question. And what we found is that of our students who aren't graduating, many of it, much of it does go back to middle school. So non-graduates are not made in high school. They are made much earlier than that. And part of the goals are to ensure that they have good experiences in middle schools, because what's happening, and what we found, is that without solid skills, kids experience middle school very differently. Some are doing remediation all the time, not experiencing the cool things of exploration of, you know, careers, things like that. And others have a different experience. So we're starting young. But also, you had mentioned the two years. We have seen the transition years of kids who are just new middle school kids and kids who are just new high school kids, experiencing just what you said. They, maturity-wise, knowledge-wise, they spent too much time in front of a screen in their bedrooms, probably, and haven't had the experiences. So through our SEL classes, or just our connect-and-detect time, you know, where we have group meetings in schools, we're trying to do that. But also encourage the kinds of sports and activities that you talked about, because that makes connections with other people. And redefining ready is the research we're using behind this. It's the empirical evidence. And it basically shares a little bit of what you had an insight into, where they're not doing anything, they don't connect with other kids, or they're just wanting to get out. It's sharing with us that sports, as well as debate teams, or chess teams, or service projects, are what connect kids back to their community and back to each other. And that some of those are much better at preparing kids for life after graduation than their English class, right? So, and what it does is that when you're on a sports team, or you're in the band, or in the debate team, you have a team. You have to prepare, you have to do your work, or else everybody else is going to suffer. You know, you're connected to other people. And you learn that you show up on time, you end on time. So some of those life lessons that we want for that is building in experiences in middle school and high school to get back to those interconnections of students. But it's from redefining ready, we could go into it more. But what you have seen, experienced with your peers, is exactly what also our teachers have shared with us. Just the, I guess, the lack of engagement. And what we believe it is from probably lack of knowledge about these things or interconnectedness.
Thank you. Member Constant, you have your hand up.
Thank you, President Bellamy. I just want to also note on this chart that it's actually a really great success. And I want to underscore that the district has, through all of those challenges, managed to continue the upward arc. And so despite much of the rhetoric that I heard over the last two years, I am filled with great joy to see this and to hear this in a public meeting, which this is data-based and not just anecdotal. And so this is a very important document, and this should be celebrated.
Thank you, Member Constant. Okay, let's continue on with our summer school update.
Thank you, Madam President. President, yes. And it's basically the handout. We have over 7,000 students engaging with ASD in one manner or another. This provides professional development, as well as employment, for our educators to learn more, as well, and work with students and do some programs. They are everything from school-based programs to district-wide targeted. But again, we just want to engage kids and engage families. And our summer school does have transportation that we're running. But if you have any questions, you can email us. There's so many different programs at the school level, whether their title, district lever, funded by our CARES money and other money. Basically, when we received funds, the Board allocated some for that reteaching necessary when we didn't have kids in schools. And we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Member Cross?
Thank you. Curious, anticipating some issues and some challenges that we're going to have, okay? We're possibly looking at a recession. We're looking at individuals, we're looking at labor rates and pay rates not rising enough to offset the rapid inflation. Any parents will be working more, more likely to be drawing extra hours to help cover bills and expenses. I like a lot of what I see here. What incentives, or what are we doing to encourage and help parental involvement in education? Since making sure that these values are then being conveyed at home with parents who may be working longer hours? What are we doing to help the parents? If you could speak a little bit about that in light of what I would anticipate to be some challenges coming very soon, if not experiencing already?
Sure, that's a great question. And certainly, parents are students-first and primary teachers. So we definitely want them connected. And like you said, a lot of folks work, and I was a working parent, single parent for a long time. And the idea that you had to go into a school to be connected, I mean, I was working for school systems, but I couldn't go to my own kid's school sometimes, until after I was off work. So it really heartfelt in understanding that, that the connections are made through knowing what child's doing, knowing teachers' names, teachers communicating as well. This summer, for instance, and at summer school, we're trying out a program that we wrote to the state and got a grant, and it's a MIRA program. And so it's for our youngest kids. And it actually connects parents and their kids, this may sound crazy, with an avatar in the program, that kids are, it's almost like a game for kids. But it gives reports to parents about, these are where your students are struggling. This is how you can help them. But kids see it as a 15-minute game that they get to do every day, you know, on this technology. So we're building capacity with families through technology, just innovative connections when parents can't be there, just so that they know what's going on. So that I'm also given a clue that, oh, my child struggles with this beginning sound or blending, or whatever. I mean, I'm going with elementary, but it could be middle school, too. It connects parents back to, these are the things you can do at home that's going to support your child to do better at school. Because it is agreed that when families are involved, students just feel supported. And it doesn't mean involved, again, that I have to go to the PTA meeting. It means I know what's expected of my kid. I'm going to do the best I can to prepare them before they go. And I'm going to work with them and really have an open communication with teachers. So at the school level, those things generally, you know, occur, just that connectedness with our communities. And for a long time, we didn't have it, because we shut our schools. And we said, no, no visitors, no here. We're open, we're engaged, just re-inviting and re-making those connections. Because the relationships of trust matter, that they're going to trust their school to do the best with their kid. So.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I appreciate that. Is there any intention to do anything that's a little more proactive, reaching out to parents? I've got a son who went through ASD. I've got three children who are currently in ASD. And as a parent, you have to be intentional, right? You have to go in. But I can understand when somebody who's maybe overwhelmed with work, you know, getting an email or report or, you know, logging into Zangle or whatever it is that you're, whatever app they're doing. I just, I'm curious on what those proactive attempts are to connect with the parent because then they understand that their input is important. Because right now, I will tell you, when they become teenagers, when they become 13, you know, the kid doesn't want you buttoning anything.
Right.
Right? None of your business. It's hard enough to get them to do it. That's why you got to have those tools, you know, and sometimes a serp, even though they don't want you involved in it, it's for their best. You know, kids are, for whatever reason, they're not always honest about doing their homework. So, so those proactive tools. Because what my experience is with three kids in the school system is that I have to pursue and I constantly have to drag that information in. And if people are working more, they're just going to be inundated. So how are we being the extension? Because if we're getting more at home and the parents are, then the cost of education goes down tremendously, which is, you know, a financial concern. You're getting better results because it's being supported, not just at school, at home. So other than an app or a video game that someone plays-
Well, certainly, yeah. I did, I know, that's actually for learning, like for parents to learn what their kids need to learn. But for just connection, there actually is, I mean, if you can imagine a teacher with 180 students, it's going to be very difficult for that teacher to be able to make 180 calls a week, especially when parents are at work and can't take calls, right? So our Q system actually does have a parent portal that you can, from afar, look at courses, how they're doing, is their attendance online, which you thought it should be, or they skip in school? You can look at their assignments, what they got on them. So that engenders that initiative from families, because that's updated weekly, to have up-to-date information so that, you know, when your kid says, no, I don't have a test on Friday, you can go, well, actually, I saw that you did and this is what you got on it, right? So to be transparent to parents, we have that, it's called the Q grading system. And you have your own portal to look into, you know, so that your child would know if you told them you got in there or not. You know, they wouldn't know. You could just surprise them if you wanted to. Also, in our schools, especially at the middle school level, we provided additional time to our teachers to actually meet and be able to make those calls. Because we know, kind of back to Sarah's issue, that those connections to schools either get stronger in middle school or they get worse. And that's when kids start to pull away. And so we do provide middle school's time to meet the teachers that co-teach the kid, like the English, math. Everybody will meet and say, hey, let's reach out, who are we going to reach out? So they actually have little mini child study, you know, reach out terms. If they see that a kid might be struggling with friendships or struggling with academics, you know, they're able to meet and intervene and see how they can support the child. And part of that is calling home and sharing that information. So we can continue, some of the things we've done is texting. Texting seems to be when we ask our parents, how do you like to get your information the quickest? Interestingly enough, it's not a call, sometimes it's through text. Just text me if I need to know something. And there, we have to be very critical because we want to use the district's systems for texting, not independent texting. We don't want any teacher using their own phones to text kids because we don't want to go in that route either. So they're built in, but again, it's human actions and human connections that make that positive. I didn't want you to think that an app is just like this outside unfeeling thing. Those are our tools to accelerate the relationships. But we can certainly take that back and reconnect because the toughest is middle and high, high schools for the connections.
Yeah, and it's text, phone, and what language parents want to be communicated in or with. Okay, see no other hands. Thank you, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, and your questions were great. I'd love that you were like keyed into education. Woo-hoo! Now I'll pass it off to Dr. Bryant.
So next on our agenda, we have a legislative update by the Muni, but do we have?
Thank you, President Bellamy. Actually, I believe Mr. Donnelly had requested this item to be placed on the agenda and I'm not sure exactly what it's pertaining to.
Member Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam President. My thought was that it'd be really good to do an after-action report from both the Anchorage School District's lobbying efforts and also the municipal lobbying efforts. It seemed like an appropriate meeting to do it at after the conclusion of legislative session. I was hoping that our actual lobbyists would be here to talk to us and so they're going to come on Monday.
We're having that discussion on Monday, which is, I thought that was my response, but maybe I didn't send it. But we will have that, our discussion, our internal discussion on Monday with our lobbyists.
And I really think, I would look forward to next year. I think this meeting next year, following the legislative session, it would be good jointly as a community to have our lobbyists here to report to us as a collective body because there's a lot of crossover of the interest between the municipality and the school district and-
Okay. Thank you, Member Donnelly. Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, President Bellamy. I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Chamberlain wasn't online.
No, she is not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So that brings us to G6. Yes, Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So yesterday, I met with the youth representative to the school board and we talked about a lot of different issues that are facing the youth of Anchorage, that are facing students. Even though she's all the way from Southside and I'm from Eagle River, we actually found that our experiences are quite parallel. There's a lot of similarities in the struggles that youth are facing in our schools. But by far, the biggest one, and it's an epidemic going across our country, is student mental health. And I noticed that it's one of the guardrails as well for the school board. And so we really thought it was best to just outline that impact. We provided some data, but honestly, if you talk to students and teachers and parents about what's been going on these last few years, you'll get a lot more personal information and heartbreaking information about adolescent mental health in our community. And so through this resolution, what we are asking is, we truly want a collective and active effort to actually have an impact on the youth of Anchorage because right now, we're in a really dangerous place. It is killing children, it's affecting their education, they're dropping out, they're not showing up to school, they're not being connected to our community, they're not making these college and future goals. And so one of the ways we thought that we could solve this problem and try to address it, you can never try to remedy a problem if you don't know the extent that it is. And there's never been widespread data collected on the youth of Anchorage, even though our state is the second highest adolescent suicide rate. And so we decided, we came up with a survey. The school board members were provided an example of this because they would be the ones that would uptake something like this. And we also know that there's the environmental and student connectiveness surveys that happen every year. So our proposal was either doing an individual mental health survey or adding on questions to that survey that addressed mental health. And Member Jacobs, we were having that conversation, is getting parent involvement because issues like this, they're not easy and they do involve the home life and parents very often. And so the survey would be completely optional if the school district were to go forward with this. We, myself and Ellie Shaw agreed that parents should have access to the questions, they can decide their students not taking it, students can decide if they don't want to answer one or all the questions. But collecting this data is so important on depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, eating disorders, so that as the school district and as the assembly allocates these funds, they're going to be able to target where these students need help. And in the survey, there are portions which actually ask students, how do you cope with your mental health if you're struggling or what resources do you need? So it's no longer going to be speculation, where do we need to put funds, what staff members do we need to offer assistance to? You're going to actually have some substantial data to go off of to address the issue. And as well, Ms. Shaw and I discussed counselors in the district and we thought it would be really good for school district counselors, for every school to either have one or all the counselors, just be really dedicated to the mental health of their students and make sure that's their first priority. Because counselors can get very busy, they have a lot of tasks to accomplish during the day, the beginning of the school year, some semester, they're redoing everyone's schedules and that's a lot of work. But myself and her, through our connections with students and youth, we've seen a lot of interactions where students are going for help and they're being denied by staff members saying that they're too busy. But children's lives, I think, take the first priority because if our kids aren't mentally well, they're not going to be able to learn. And oftentimes, we're seeing they're dropping out, they're not being connected, they're not finding a passion for what they want to do in their future. So we just think that it's time to really have that conversation. It's time to find out how deep the problem goes to really solve it because we're seeing there's an absence of solutions in our community. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Member Zolotell, you have a question, comment?
I have a question and first I want to make a comment. Thank you for this. This is really important work. Just as a reminder, through the first round of ARPA funding, the municipality provided significant mental health supports to ASD and I think it was really important. I think it provides some good data and some good baseline information. I think, you know, to proceed with a survey, I think we would really need to get connected with our local NAMI chapter to really inform that survey. I know they've been doing some really good work about mental health interventions in schools as well as the Volunteers of America. From the assembly side, and I don't know if we have Member Perez Verdia with us today, but the Health Policy Committee of the Anchorage Assembly is really looking at mental health supports within our community. And so I think this is something we could refer to that committee and then work jointly with the corresponding committee of the school district to come up with strategies and interventions that make sense, starting from these recommendations, using the data maybe we've already gotten from the interventions already in place within ASD and relying on our local experts here in the city.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, this is very pertinent to the work we've already started with. I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but Dr. Knudsen and Katie, do you guys want to just come and share just a snippet of how we are redesigning our, and making sure all our dots are connected when it comes to the whole wellness of our kids, which includes the mental health? And please introduce yourselves and your positions. Yep.
Good morning. I'm Caitlin McClellan and I'm the Senior Director of Healthcare Services here at Anchorage School District.
And I'm Jenny Knudsen. I am going to be the Senior Director of Mental Health and Student Supports in the Anchorage School District, starting July 1.
Okay. And just a little overview of the, kind of what you gave to the board a couple of weeks ago, just in general, the kinds of work we're going to be doing and who's going to be involved?
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm just going to add, so we had traditionally just had health services and it was really the physical health with our nursing programs and things like that. So we have, when we had a position change, Kate comes to us from the behavioral health and mental health expertise. So we hired a leader there. And then to support the board's goals, we redesigned a position that we had into specifically a partner for Jenny and Kate to work together in both mental health and student support services as well as how they're interconnected with physical health. And so I just wanted to share that, that this is, we're finishing up the work this year, but moving into next year, we actually redesigned how it will look to be more cogent and supporting of the work in schools, so.
And I can start from the school-based perspective because I really appreciate what you had to say. And we are going to be actually looking at our internal mental health providers within the school district. So our school psychologists, our counselors, we have behavior specialists in the district. And to your point, how do we prioritize that mental and behavioral health work? Because there's a lot on everyone's plate and we hear this a lot is like, you know, we're just, you know, school psychologists, they're busy doing X, Y, and Z, or our counselors busy doing scheduling and those types of things. So that's part of the work we're going to be starting is starting to look at what are people actually doing now? What are their jobs and what are they spending their time on? And how do we start looking at reprioritizing that so that we can have mental health be at the top of their workload so we can help, better help support kids, especially after the pandemic? This was here before the pandemic, but is just shone a light on the needs, you know, within the schools.
Yeah, and through the chair, thank you for that. And I think, you know, one of the most important things is also ensuring that there, it needs to be consistent across the district because, you know, there are schools that have really good counselors, really good support systems. But Ellie and I, through talking with a lot of students, have realized that there are other schools where there is none. And it's really upsetting also, like on the, you know, logistical side of it, to see the assembly, to see our federal, state government putting in these funds. But as youth, as students who have, I've been in it since second grade and she's lived here her whole life, we've not seen it at all. And so for many students to make it through without seeing those impacts, something clearly needs to change. And really making sure psychologists and the counselors get to know their students because I've been here, like I said, since second grade. I didn't even know my school psychologist, there was a school psychologist until a student tried to commit suicide and they tried to come in and help people. But I think it needs to be more preventative instead of, you know, cleanup duty, trying to, after really awful things happen. And, you know, youth aren't always going to go to the counselors, they're not always going to go to a psychologist, especially if they don't know them. So that's why I think a mass survey would be so helpful because you can see how students are coping, if some students are not coping, and just trying to locate those students. You know, keeping it anonymous because that's, I think, really big. But, you know, finding where the problem is to really help your guys' work and help everyone in getting to the root of this problem and solving it because it, the impact it has had on our schools over the last three years, it is, I cannot even describe in words, so.
Well, and I appreciate that also because I have teenagers too and I've heard that from them as well. So as part of Guard Rail 4.1, that's really the internal where we're focusing on our school district internal resources and how do we, how do we provide those services or rearrange? And we've started a little bit so we can better serve kids, better support staff. So some of the things we're looking at is what are those roles and responsibilities? Looking at how do we do like youth mental health first aid training? We've done that with a lot of secondary teachers, but how do we bring that down to elementary teachers throughout the whole continuum? Because they're with kids every day as well. And like you said, sometimes kids don't take the initiative to go see someone, but if they have someone in the school that can recognize that and share with them where they can go for those resources, that would be great. So that's a piece that we're working on. And I'm going to let Kate talk a little bit about the other part from the community and then what our plans are to get, because we want involvement of community and especially students. Because as Dr. Bishop said, this really came out of the board meetings where we were getting feedback from students and mental health was a high priority on that list for our students.
So to speak to the other side, I really joined the district. So I joined the district in January and part of my real passion to join this team here was to see that our schools are really at the front lines of the mental health crisis. And coming from the behavioral health side of the world, I was seeing youth kind of over in our community behavioral health sector. And then we're seeing youth being served in the schools. And really, there's efforts to blend those through Alaska Behavioral Health, who's in our school-based health centers, that's overseen by the Healthcare Services Department. That's where students in four high schools can receive basic healthcare services as well as access to an onsite behavioral health partner. So there were some efforts, Volunteers of America was in schools and then more recently, Providence. So while these efforts are there, it still seemed like we were operating in isolation and those efforts weren't expanded to the length that I think everybody wants to. And it's this really complex system. So to see that we want to come in and support programs and really break down those silos and build bridges. And the guardrails that I was fortunate to come in and get to support really are that bridge between what's happening in the community sector and what's happening in the educational sector. And our goal really is to break down those silos and to build bridges so that students and families have access to one system of care. So that'll really be what, what my kind of realm in 4.2 is looking at, is bringing in our community providers to support students in the schools. And I just also want to echo Jenny and just thanking you for the solutions that you guys proposed today. You came not just with the problem that I think everyone at this table can acknowledge, but to say like, hey, we have some ideas and some solutions. And that data driven by students could be really helpful and beneficial in the work moving forward and we'll appreciate having- And we'll appreciate having student voice involved in this process. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And Sarah, we will forward this to our Governance Committee so that we can begin discussions around the next step with this. So first in the queue, I have Member Jacobs, and then Member Constance and Member Cross.
Thank you, Madam President. Sarah, I appreciate the, bringing forward the resolution for both yourself, as well as our youth representative. I think anytime we hear from the youth, it's, as Dr. Bishop alluded to earlier, it's some of the peerless feedback we can get from our community. I wanted to highlight that the board did get an update from administration that's in our board docs and publicly available on April 18. That contains a lot of useful information that was touched on by Ms. McClellan. I, as a therapeutic foster parent, I care for youth with mental health diagnoses. I see the youth you're referring to every day at home. And so please know you have allies on the board who aren't just going to have the conversations going forward, but have been having those conversations. Dr. Knudsen and Ms. McClellan have been hearing from me regularly, and they will continue to do so. And so I appreciate you bringing forward the feedback, and I'm looking forward to further conversations.
Thank you. Member Constance.
Thank you. You know, just one thing was said that I would like to speak about briefly, that maybe the goal of this is to resolve the issue so that it goes away. And my experience in the field, I've been working in the field for almost 20 years, behavioral health, addiction, mental health. These issues don't get resolved and cured. These are lifelong issues for a lot of people. And the systems that we create should be tailored to help people live their best life, but not to presume that we can undo or remake people from who they actually are.
Thank you, Member Constance. Yes, Member Cross.
Yeah, I think what's been stated here just is reinforced by when we started this meeting, we talked about what the students said was important, which was financial training. The other one was conflict resolution. And I think that that conflict resolution, that is another way of saying, I have some stresses. I have things that I'm dealing with. And they're not, this is, this is a direct, they're basically supporting what you said. They may not know that those mental health support services are even there. They might not be connecting. Or there may be a fear of the persona of if I pursue this, does that make me look weak? Am I going to subject myself to whatever it is? So how do we? Because the conflict resolution, I think that's, that is the student's way of saying that we have mental health concerns.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay, so we will proceed with, I'll move this into Governance. Member Holloman is here. He's our Governance Chair. So he has, he will take the next steps with the board discussion, discussing that. I think I don't see any other hands online or in the room. I do want the record to show that Member Higgins did join us online a while ago. Sorry, Member Higgins, I forgot to announce that. Alrighty, so that brings us to member comments. I'm just gonna, instead of doing a round robin, expecting everybody to comment, those of you who would like to comment, just give me, raise your hand, and I will, for members, this is members, will be with you and the minister. Any Assembly member or board member who'd like to make a comment at this time? Yes, President LaFrance.
Thank you, President Bellamy. And thank you to the board and the school district for hosting this meeting today. I appreciate the information. I wanted to note that per a conversation or an agenda item, I believe we had in our last joint meeting concerning the BSA and Anchorage as the starting point. I wanted to let everyone know that we held an Assembly Rules Committee meeting in March, March 25, actually. And Assembly Council provided a presentation and a recommendation of some next steps. So if you go to muni.org, click on Assembly, and at the top, click on Committees and scroll down to the Rules Committee, you can find that presentation and recommendations. Thank you, President Bellamy.
Thank you very much. Yes, Sarah, you have comments. And then Miss, Member Cross.
Yeah, I just, I did want to thank everyone for being so welcoming and for really opening the conversation on mental health. Because I don't think, it's not a partisan issue. It's not one side at all. I think everyone really truly cares about that. And I think it's really important for us to find issues that we all have common views on and to really tackle those. And then as we were talking about, you know, how to better instruct our students who have dyslexia and all the data on the younger students, I'm viewing that as the start line. You know, that's the beginning of their education, and it's good to make a foundation. But I think it's even more important on how they end. Because how their life can change over, you know, 15 to 18 years, that's a pretty drastic change. And I've been seeing a lot of parallels in how a lot of it was pushing it off to the summer or pushing it off on other resources when students just need some more support. And I think the same can be said for high school. You know, a lot of students at this point are accepting failure and they're being pushed into summer school, or they're just being told to drop classes or not to pursue their goals. So I would just really encourage a reinvigoration of the value of education in our students. And that's something, Dr. Bryant, you can take over. Our district has never truly had that drive for education. You know, you look at the East Coast and college students, they're competing for jobs. They're competing for these scholarships. They're trying to get high test scores. They're trying to find success. And, you know, from every youth that I've talked with, the district has never had that kind of environment, that kind of push, that kind, those opportunities available to them. So as far as what to deal with, you know, as you're coming in and learning the district, that's something we've never had. And coming from a very competitive Texas district, I think that'll be really helpful. And I've seen your work that you've done with counselors, getting kids ready for college and after high school. That work is phenomenal. And if you can do that in our district, I think the change that could happen over your three-year, multiple-year term will be really great. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Sarah. I think that's it. Yes, Member Cross, and then Member Salt.
I greatly appreciate that. Yes, I grew up through the Anchorage School District. I've raised many kids through the school district. And so, you know, and I was very blessed to have some very powerful, fantastic teachers who changed the trajectory of my life. And I was also dyslexic and in special ed and had to take the short school bus to elementary school because that's how we got from the hillside to Taku Elementary, where I got special, where I got dyslexic training. In that, what I discovered, and I discovered amongst many of my individual friends, is that we just, there's a, the challenge is you have so many children that have to learn so differently. But I didn't actually start to, you know, education didn't kick in for me till I was doing things hand-on, kinesthetically, tearing things apart with my hands and building. The King Career Center was probably the best thing that ever happened to me. Okay, I went on to get engineering certificates and it changed the trajectory. It was very successful, although I was a horrible student. And so, and I apologize to all my teachers that are listening to this. I appreciate you. And if you had to take Xanax because of me, I apologize. But once I learned that, how to funnel that energy, so I just, you know, I would like another time just to talk about how important the King Career Center is, how we do that, how we take individuals that are all rocket, no rudder, and understand that there is a fantastic place for it in our society and we desperately need because we're so short on people with skills. Honestly, if you know, if you just go out and talk to employers, there's such a shortage of college rates. So I see career-ready in college. I see college and career. You know, there is fantastic careers that don't involve college that pay extremely well right now. And how do we get individuals finding value in who they are and the skills that they have immediately? And they don't have to wait until they're, until on the job train. So maybe that's another meeting at some point, how we can support the King Career Center. Because I personally, it changed my life.
And we have lots of pathways that we would love to share with you, including the King, the Career Center.
I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And so we will make a point of, maybe we'll do that soon. The next, I think our next meeting is September 9. We'll see how, see what we can. But we have options and lots of pathways for students who are not college-bound, but are absolutely life and career-bound. So thank you. Yes, Member Salt. Salt?
Thank you, appreciate it. Try to re-brief. I really appreciate the mental health discussion because if we don't take care of these children now and give them the right tools, right resources to cope, they'll become our homeless, our mental health, our drug addicts in the future. Kind of a grim way to look at it. That's truth of reality. I do also want to touch on, I hear more and more about a financial cliff coming for when the COVID funds run out. I think the PERS money. I don't look at it as a cliff. I look at those programs that were started under COVID. When COVID ends and the funds ends, those, those programs would go away. So you may want to start thinking about, is that truly the end of these programs? Are there some programs that need to continue? That, that COVID, I think like Mr. Constance said, this is a lifelong issue and it's not going to end just because we created an issue through COVID. It's not going to end just because the pandemic ends. And some of these kids will need resources beyond. I believe I've also heard, and I'd heard it stated today, that really our best shot is kindergarten through third grade to get these kids the help they need. And beyond third grade, the resources required to give them that help become more difficult and more costly. So thank you for today. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I think one of my comments, I see you, Member Donley, just has to do with, yes, you know, mental health is, is, has, is not just a new phenomenon. It has always been with us. Things have been, COVID has exasperated a lot of our systems and how we support people. And it's not just about our kids with the mental health. It's our staff. It's the parents of our kids. So as a community, we have to build a huge safety net so that no one falls through the crack. And coming from a dysfunctional or a toxic living environment does not always, it can manifest itself at school just as, just as seriously. And so, you know, these last couple of years, we, 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 we get to not just notice, but we get to reimagine and redesign how we are delivering services to our kids and our families and how we are training our adults to deal with that. So I, I just think that this gives us the greatest opportunity to do that. For a couple of years, we did the best we could, given the information we had. We told kids, basically, in staying home, that you can isolate. We don't want them to isolate. We know now that that was not a good thing. We told kids that, you know, you don't have to participate in activities because we were trying to keep them safe. We know now, we know better. And as Dr. Bishop says, when we know better, we do better. And so we, the work is clear. The challenge is huge. But I think, yes, the district has a part. But we have got, the Assembly has a part. And you guys have been so generous with trying to meet the needs in this community. They are phenomenal. They're just layered, multi-layered. And so together, in being supportive and in partnership with those who are the experts, that's where, that, I think that's what, that's what we've got to do. We've got to partner better, collaborate better, and coordinate better. Member Donley.
Madam President, I had two things I wanted to talk about. First, regarding the proposal currently before the Assembly regarding removing the mayor from office, it also changes rules regarding the school board. And it adopts a lower threshold for bringing these complaints for removal. And the standard of proof is quite low. It's a mere preponderance of the evidence as I read the ordinances I've seen, and I haven't been at all your meetings. And that low level of evidence combined with making the requirement for a vote lower is concerning to me. And I think it could be balanced out with some additional respect given to the hearing officer decision. Once the hearing officer makes a decision, there seems to be no standard of proof included in the proposed ordinance for what the body uses in making their decision of whether to accept the hearing officer's decision or not. And traditionally, you know, in any court, on an appeal, there's a standard of proof that that court is challenged to follow. And I think it may be very appropriate here to have a standard of proof that's more than a preponderance of the evidence for overturning a hearing officer recommendation when it comes to this, especially since we're lowering the original threshold for access to the, for filing the complaint. So those are just a couple of my thoughts on what the, what this ordinance is dealing with now. Also, I really think that it could be de-politicalized tremendously by simply having a delayed effective date. When people ran for mayor or people voted for mayor, the rules were the rules. And I think it'd be appropriate to delay it till after the next mayor election to go into effect if that's what the Assembly really wants to do with this. And that would really remove the political stigma from this particular action by the Assembly. And I really hope you would consider that if this is what you really want to do. Because it would really go a long way to healing the rift in this community right now over this proposal. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about school safety. We did pass, the school board did send the Assembly a resolution several years ago requesting the expansion of SROs into all our middle schools. We all know that these threats to elementary schools come from external sources by almost universally. And we're doing, you know, we're, have a strong program of hardening our elementary schools. But the threats to middle schools and secondary schools come from external sources. I mean, from internal sources very frequently. And the lack of SROs in our middle schools, other than Clark, I think is a real gap in our school's security. We do have the other gap, and that's because our officers are on a four-day schedule. What happened at Bartlett recently was we predicted that could happen for years. Is, we only had one SRO scheduled to be there, and that SRO was, was somewhere else or on leave. And so we had a lack of an SRO when we had a firearm threat from external Bartlett at that school. And we've always known there was that potential gap. And it's pretty horrifying it actually occurred. And just all the praise in the world to the staff there that did phenomenal efforts to prevent that from getting more serious. But we should have had an SRO at that school. That's, that's our generally assumed thing is we've got them at our high schools and we didn't have one there that day because of that four-day schedule with a lack of a backup for the one person that was, one officer that was scheduled to be there. We need to address that and make sure that doesn't happen again. Second.
Member Donley, could I get? I need to, you've had, that was two things. Can I come back to you in a minute?
Well, no, I'm still on school safety. I've got two more points on school safety.
Okay.
I think we ought to be looking at breaking out our school safety projects, our elementary school hardensings and other school hardensings, including our improvement, reform of our locks in our schools from the rest of the bond propositions. I supported the bonds last time because it had the school safety project. There were things I disagreed with, but I felt adamant about the school safety projects. I think we ought to give the voters a chance just to take that right off the table because I think we're getting 90% votes for the school safety projects. You know, and let them make a rational decision about other projects. That's one recommendation I'm making at this time. And then I think we need to begin to plan and reduce the number of entry points into our middle schools and high schools. our middle schools and high schools. I know we've been very reluctant to do that, it's going to be a big challenge, but we heard the testimony from our retiring SRO head, and I think he's right on that that is something we need to start addressing with our middle schools. Maybe we could start with our middle schools and move into our secondary schools, but we need to start looking at that. I know it's not going to be popular, I know that everybody wants to go in and out of the schools all, through every door. But I think we're just faced with a new reality, Madam President, and we need to really start to look at accomplishing that, or at least reducing the number of access points to our secondary schools. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Member Donnelly. In the, I think, looking at, we still have two people that wish to speak, and we have at least one person, maybe two people that's here to testify, or at least provide comment. Can we get, I'd like to extend the minute, the meeting, 10 minutes. So moved? Okay, any opposition? All right, so we will go until 12:10. Thank you. So next, on my, in the queue, we have, Member Quinn Davidson?
Hi, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make a couple of points. First, I appreciated the conversation, that's been an ongoing conversation for years, about mental health in schools, and frankly, outside of schools as well. But I just want to remind members, I hope that the members who are speaking up about how important this is, will join the rest of us in funding these services. You know, your budget is your values. And so, if you care about public safety, you'll support school resource officers. If you care about, you know, making sure we catch problems early and use our funds efficiently, you'll support early education, et cetera. So I just really hope that this conversation will translate into real action through votes to fund these services. A second, I wanted to thank Mr. Donnelly for his comment about busing and how that is outside of the funding limitations. That's a really interesting point, because I have been talking with Dr. Bishop, and thank you, Dr. Bishop, and others for years, about our, what I view as inequitable public school system, where affluent families lottery out of their local schools to predominantly more white, more affluent schools that have specialty programs. I think it's unfair for vulnerable students. It dilutes the support, parental support and other resources in those neighborhood schools, and it creates and perpetuates a world of haves and have-nots. So I look forward to working with the new superintendent to try to address this. And I think Mr. Praspardea, who I know is also interested in this and is available, tell Mr. Constance, there are a bunch of us who want to really tackle this. And so, I guess I want to start thinking about, again, you know, we've had these discussions prior to COVID, and then sort of got out of it, but I think back to, how can we, you know, we have, we have schools that don't even have free lunch, free breakfast, or busing. How can kids who don't have affluent parents get there? They can't, is the answer. And so, I think we need to change that, and I just want to continue these conversations. So I don't know if it's putting it on the agenda or talking to the school board members offline, but I'll be hopefully working with all of you to change that.
Thank you, Member Quinn Davidson. Next, we have, Member Constance.
Thank you, I too have a couple of things. First, I want to go back to the previous conversation about COVID and mental health, and just say, it was asserted that we created this issue through COVID, and I rebut that. And I also don't share the perspective that, given similar circumstances, facing a potential massive death event, a global pandemic, that we wouldn't shut down again. I hope and pray that we never have to. But the fact is, it was stated on the very first day of the emergency, that if we fail in our responsibilities, you will see dead people. If we are successful, people will question whether a response was even necessary at all. And I'm hearing that questioning happening here, and it's fine to question, but I will not let it be asserted without providing an alternative perspective. We did not create the mental health issue by responding to the pandemic. That's one. And second is, to Mr. Donnelly's point about the accountability ordinance, the, I think it's worth communicating to the school board why the section on school board and Assembly removals was shifted to a six-vote majority to initiate the process. And that's because the previous version that was drafted, the current version that's drafted in the code is actually out of compliance with the Charter. Charter, Section 701, Part B, reads the first sentence. Proceedings for removal of an elected official for breach of the public trust may be initiated by a majority of all members of the Assembly or the school board, in the case, removal of a school board member. So the Charter actually commands that, if it's to be done, it can be done by a simple majority to begin the process. The actual next step, after all of the due process proceedings that are in the code, is a supermajority, a two-thirds vote. And so, I just want to make sure everybody understands why that section of the code was incorporated into the amendment, because it's currently out of alignment with the Charter.
Thank you, Member Constance. And finally, Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to first acknowledge and thank the Assembly's support of public education, both now and hopefully going forward. To Member Quinn Davidson's point, we, as a board, were able to allocate specific funds towards mental health in our most recent budget, in part, which might not have been possible, had we not received the continued support from the municipality. So thank you. Mental health funding and mental health supports are critical, and so I will gladly engage with any member of the Assembly or Board as we further discuss how to, how to support our youth. Did want to also welcome Members Cross and Salt. I think this is our first joint meeting, and so I know you folks are drinking through a fire hose on the municipal level, having jumped right into first quarter budget revisions. As you have time to engage the district and learn about all the amazing things that are happening here in the district, please know that I stand ready to be a resource. I know other board members will too, so please feel free to reach out. And thanks for everyone attending today, we'll see you next time.
And I, thank you, Member Jacobs. I also wanted to welcome Assembly Members Cross and Salt to our first joint meeting. And we look forward to working with you. This is also Dr. Bishop's last, and she's probably, she's probably, don't, don't jump up in, but this is her last joint meeting with us, as she will be retiring. And I just wanted to make sure that we thank her publicly for your leadership, your compassion, the work that you have done in five years, as, as a person who was here before, is phenomenal. And I, I just want, didn't want you to, us to have this meeting without thanking you directly, and for the work and the, the leadership that you have given to this district. So thank you. And we will, of course, have a little more of a presentation on Monday. It's a secret, though. And then the other person, this is her last meeting, is Katie, our Katie. She's not going far, but she's not going to be with the board in her new venture. And so, we want, I want to also publicly thank Katie for, I mean, I don't know what, as board chair, I don't know what this board would do without, without Katie. So for both Katie and Dr. Bishop, please join me in, in giving them our most sincere appreciation and gratitude, both of you. And we, our last piece of business, we have Mr. Darden has signed up to testify. Mr. Darden, if you will come here, you have three minutes. Oh, you can just give us your name when you come up, sir, you'll be next. Thank you. Katie has a timer.
You'll be able to turn it on, turn it on, on the screen. I'm just waiting for the time, there it is. So I wanted to actually thank, take a moment for us to give a round of applause to Jeff Fenske. He's a member of the public, he's standing right here. He came here volunteer, he's not on the municipal or Anchorage School Board payroll. He's on, he's here at his own leisure to make sure the public process is administered. And anyone else that's here not being paid, just because they want to see our community successful and our government held accountable. So I'd just like to do a clap to Jeff, if you want to stand up and clap, we have that ability to do that as well. Yeah, Jeff Fenske, he's an expert in the importance of vitamin D, which we're all getting plenty of right now, we can go out, yesterday I went out and I seen an eagle come down and swoop up a fish, right in the middle of a whole bunch of swimmers. And I was thinking, it's going to go after a little dog or something, but it came up with the fish. I mean, we live in a, we live in a truly amazing state, and believe it or not, I believe, you know, God put on my heart last night, believe it or not, and I thought about every member of the Assembly, I thought about every member of the school board, the executive, Tom Roth, Katie Grant, Deana Bishop, I thought about everyone. Mayor Dave Bronson, Michael Savie, former health guy, and it was forgiveness. You know, it's, it's the power of just ultimate forgiveness. You know, we've, we've had differences, you know, it was December 7th, 2020, I actually had Sergeant Reynolds come to my work, when I worked for the municipality of Anchorage, before conveniently, the mayor wrote that position out of the budget, and it was unanimously approved by the entirety of the Assembly. Now, there, there's a, you know, when a man does his job, he works really hard, there's only one way to get rid of somebody, it's pretty blatantly obvious, when the guy who did a public citizen's arrest on the entirety of the Anchorage School Board, and the entire Anchorage Assembly and the mayor, because, you know, it's a, it's an important thing to me, when, you know, kids are being jabbed with bioweapons, that we hold them accountable. And, you know, I, I love all you guys, but we can love each other and work together. You know, Nyle Sherwood-Williams is still in court to this day to come into a joint school board meeting in December 7th, 2020. Mine was dismissed, but they're still going after people like January 6th. And, you know, there, you know, just think about how you could pardon these people and forgive them, because we have, we're talking about courts, we have, we have awesome laws and last state constitution, Article 1, Section 8, the grand juries can...
Thank you, Mr. Darden. And our next speaker? You have three minutes, sir. The timer will be on the screen.
Where?
On the screen. Yeah, it'll come up in a minute. Please state your name.
Okay, my name is, my name is Jeff Fenske. And I like to talk about vitamin D, because it's the whole solution to this whole mask thing. When Dr. Bishop talked about enunciating, not saying words, being so important for people being able to speak and learn consonants and all that. The masks muffle the sound, and the children can't see the lips. And I have no idea why, when children are in danger of dying from COVID, that this was mandated, and the teachers shouldn't even be wearing masks. All they need is high enough vitamin D, 5,000 to 10,000 IU per day, and make sure they're above 50 nanograms per milliliter, getting tested, and, and it's, it's almost impossible to get the cytokine storm that people die from, and that's what they put people on ventilators for. And also, mental health, for years, we're in Alaska, eight months out of the year, we can't get enough sun to get enough vitamin D from the sun. If Black Lives Matter, why, and they need up to 10 times the amount of sun to get the same amount of vitamin D. So they're, they're year-round depressed unless they're taking enough vitamin D, at least 5,000 to 10,000 for adults, and more for the obese. So we have a lot of obese children who need a lot more vitamin D, and it's a, and on my website, tobefree.presse, T-O-B-E-F-R-E-E dot press, article pinned to the top has three articles for the Assembly, and the third one is on vitamin D, and I have it all there. I showed a video before the Assembly of a, of an Afro-American teacher who was clinically depressed, actually institutionalized for depression. She got healed from her depression by taking 10,000 IUs of vitamin D. In Alaska, we need to get together on this. There was a Senator Sears who was on this state senator, Alaska State Senator, who was on top of vitamin D for a long time, nobody's taking it up. It's just a no-brainer, it makes people feel right, and it helps people love each other, it helps marriages stay together, and, and it, everything will just flow better with enough vitamin D, and nobody's talking about, I testified five times before the Assembly, nobody's done anything. Jamie said she upped her dose. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. So that brings us to our closure. Our next scheduled joint meetings are, the next two, is September, one in September 9th, and the other is December 9th. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second to adjourn.